All right, this, uh, it is 5:30. We'll get this regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls to order. First item on our agenda is to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Um, please note that we were given notice prior to this meeting that Councilor Wagner would not be available this evening, um, and everyone else is present. We have two additions that came in on the agenda, number seven, which would be to allow the expenses and for the city council and department heads to attend the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Summer Conference in Thief River Falls. Again, this came up in our, uh, our committee of the whole meeting. It just didn't make it onto the agenda. And then, secondly, we have to consider a license agreement with Hasbargen Customs LLC for the use of our Icebox of the Nation trademark. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those two, the, uh, the agenda with those two additions.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Next, we have the minutes of the public hearing from July 3rd. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Next, we go to our last city council meeting, uh, July 3rd. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll move.
Uh, we have a motion by Councilor Kaler. I heard an immediate second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries four to zero. And finally, our committee of the whole meeting from, uh, last week, Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Go on to the resolution for the payments and claims. We have a couple of transfers, uh, going to the permanent improvement of $66,666.66. That's even, uh, evenly split between 601 Sewer and, or, I'm sorry, 601 Water and 603 Sewer in the amount of $33,333.33. Um, we have transfers going to the 403 Fund, Reserve for Capital Outlay. That's $20,567.25. That's come, coming from the 601 Water in the amount of $14,693. And the 603 Sewer in the amount of $5,874.25. For a total transfers of $87,233.91. International Falls claims of, uh, eight, $688,216.15. And Library Board claims of $4,590.73. For a total accounts payable claims of $692,806.88. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the payments and claims.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any questions? Concerns? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Uh, anybody in the audience have anything to bring forward that is not on the agenda? If there is, you'll have another opportunity later in the meeting. Uh, we'll go down to the consent agenda. We have the approval for the, uh, 2024 Life and Long Term Disability Insurance Renewal. There was no rate change. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
We have a, a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. No discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Going to new business, uh, we have a resolution approving the application for a one to four day permit on on sale liquor license for Cooching County Food Access for a fundraiser to be held on Thursday, September 14th at 1521 Second Avenue West. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that, uh, application.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Buller. And I believe that this fundraiser is going to be at their new facility. Is that correct?
Yes, if we, if everything can come together. Yep.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Next, we have another one to four day per, uh, temporary on sale liquor license for the Elks 1599 International Falls for the annual corn and brat feed to be held on Friday, August 18th, 2023 at 215 Third Street. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that liquor license.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. Any discussion?
Just the, hm, two organizations that I'm involved with.
I was gonna say it.
I'm going coincidence. They're looking for a liquor license.
I was gonna say that, but I was just gonna let it go, because I know that you're instrumental at both of those organizations.
And to thank Lisa and Betty for digging up the proper paperwork for us so we can have this. And hopefully, everybody come down August 18th and have a brat and some beer to raise some tickets. And we're gonna have a street dance till midnight. It starts at three, but from eight to 12, a street dance. And then from four to seven, patio is gonna be their plan.
Excellent. Now, uh, refresh my memory, because I, I, I know that there was just the drive-through for a couple of years. Was last year a sit-down brat feed?
Yep, last year, yep, was a sit-down.
Okay.
With a little bit of rain interruption. But it was a trick, quick transitioned inside.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Next, uh, we have, uh, uh, application for, uh, permit for International Falls Education Foundation to conduct a raffle with a drawing to be held on January 4th, 2024. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Next, we have, uh, to approve the removal or, uh, approve order for the removal or repair of the hazardous building at 1101 Ninth Street and authorized signatures. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the, well, actually, let's start with discussion so we have background information on what's, what's happening here. City Administrator?
Um, I believe this was in front of you already for this property. However, um, Chelsea had done more, a little more work with, um, Fire Marshal Jared, Jared Baldwin. And then she had drafted the, um, order that we felt we should put in front of you again for final approval to, to execute that. And I see she is online if she wanted to add additional to that as well.
Attorney Nelson, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, uh, City Administrator Bergstrom got it exactly right. This has been in front of you before, um, and Jared was available for some questions explaining. Um, this was when he put it in front of, I don't know if it was a regular city council or committee of the whole, but he asked kind of how much, um, effort we were going to put into these before we just put them in front of the council to tear them down. And this was the property in particular that we were talking about. And I've, I've now put an order together to actually have it repaired or torn down.
Okay. So the, um, the question before us is not whether it's removed or repaired. That is what their option is, and that gives them the option to either have it removed or repaired.
Correct. And then if they don't respond within the 60 days, um, the city can then go ahead and we bring it to the, the council again to ask that it's actually torn down unless, um, they contact either me or Jared and work something else out. But it would be before they talk to the council again, before it's actually torn down.
Okay. All right. With that background information, Chair would entertain a motion for the order of removal or repair.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Next, we go to, uh, the Committee of the Whole Recommendations. The first one is to approve the performance review policy. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
You skipped number five.
How do I skip one every week? Well, let's go up to approve the hiring of, uh, three part-time EMTs. We have Michael Fisher, uh, Michaela Wordier, and Lynn Zuck. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those three part-time EMTs.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Now, before us is the performance review policy. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that policy.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. I thought things were gonna get weird.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second on the performance review policy. Um, any, any questions or concerns on that? We did have a lot of discussion about this between, uh, well, one meeting, not two. So I think a lot of those have been hammered out in committee. Um, so we will, it's before us. We have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Approve the Parks and Facility Maintenance Worker Job Description and Posting. Uh, Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Tie goes to the runner that time.
Okay.
And, uh, and the second is gonna be by Councilor Kaler.
See, it got weird that time.
Kinda did.
Yeah.
Between you guys looking over there like watermelon.
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Uh, next, that, it, it has a notice on here that we're not gonna be having a second reading on the municipal garbage ordinance that passed its first reading on June 5th, and the ordinance would die for the lack of a second reading. Um, did we get any more concern, uh, follow-up on that? Because I really don't think that there's any throwing wrong. Just to say, the Chair would call for, uh, a motion to not have a second reading, but please.
I put this question out to the league and got very minimal information. Um, they indicated that we are one of the few who have two readings on an ordinance. Um, and they just said to follow your normal process. So I did put it out to Chelsea as well. Um, you know, she kind of agreed to that, and I hope she chimes in here, that, you know, if we just don't do a second reading, it does die. But in the event that it ever gets brought back up, that's what, Mayor, you had concerns about. So I asked her that same question. So what would be an appropriate action at this point to take to, to finalize this motion?
Right.
You know, and not have it, it have to go through another full two readings?
Correct.
Publication and so on and so forth. And, you know, I believe that we could just make a motion, you know, not to move it forward or, in some degree. And I, Chelsea, if you could, uh, Attorney Nelson, if you could chime in on that as well?
Uh, sure. So I did, I did look into this, and it's, it's an interesting nuance, um, with two reading ordinances, but that's fine. Um, so you can certainly do a motion and, um, do the motion not, not to approve a second reading, to essentially cut it off. Um, you can do any of those things, just from a purely legal standpoint. Um, it's not necessary, but you can do it.
Oh, I love doing things that aren't necessary, but we should do anyway.
I'd like to make a motion that we...
What, what motion would you like to make there?
That we don't move forward with the garbage thing.
So the, the, the Chair would entertain a motion to not have a second reading on the, uh, ordinance that had its first reading on June 1st. And that, that's your motion?
Yep.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? I guess I just want to follow up with, it's about trust. And I, I know what, what our intention was when we came out of the land use and legislation is to have a public meeting where people could voice their concerns. And that's what happened. And that's exactly what we needed to hear. Um, I know that, uh, both myself and, uh, Councilor, uh, Wagner, both really want to be able to fix some of the concerns that we have, and it's twofold. Um, one, I think that meeting, uh, kinda went sideways, because we really discussed one thing, and it was about the garbage and the people that are not, um, cleaning up or taking care of the, the, the garbage. And that is definitely one of the issues. And I think that we're able to rectify that with a couple of, um, changes to our, our current ordinance. And those were some of the early conversations that we had, um, last week when we, we spoke with the attorney on being able to, if you get a blight ticket, then you would be forced to have to have garbage service. But the other piece, and, and we also talked about it last week in our committee of the whole, is the concerns that we're getting from the community about recycling. And we would really like to have curbside, uh, recycling brought back. Um, and it's, it's a weird animal, because it's, recycling kinda falls into the county realm. And, uh, we are gonna be having that conversation with the county, um, coming up on a joint meeting. And I'd like to have that conversation with the county on how we can get, uh, curbside recycling back into the community. So that's, that's the goals that we have. That's what we're, we're striving for. However, we can get to fixing the people that are not, uh, taking care of their garbage and try to get curbside recycling back into the community. Those are the two things that we're really, really looking to rectify. Um, it didn't come out in our, uh, the ordinance that was brought in because of great, um, uh, community response. Um, the people that are delivered, the one thing I don't think I understood is how many people haul their own garbage and are doing it responsibly. I did, that's a piece that I didn't understand. So hearing that, having residents come in and share that was very, very good for me. Um, so anyways, we have a, a motion and a second. Is, anybody else have anything to add about the garbage ordinance? So we have a motion and a second to not have a second reading on the garbage ordinance. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Next, we have the, um, expenses for city council and/or department heads to attend the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Last week, um, uh, one of the representatives from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities came in, and, um, I'm pretty interested in seeing what their legislative priorities are. Um, I really think we need to get ambulance in that, uh, in that conversation. So, um, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to make this, but I, I do think I'm going to, um, definitely put our legislative priorities, uh, forward to them so that they understand what concerns us the most right now in northern Minnesota.
And we, we will have the chance next week. I think it is kind of like the league. They are gonna read that whatever went on. But then in the fall, we'll have another time when they really do the...
Yep.
And I would think we would get some others along with us that...
Absolutely.
Um, haven't, you know, are like us too far away to get taken over by Mayo or somebody like that, you know, that are probably in the same predicament we are. And I'd just like to say that I'm glad we're part of this league again. Um, we were when I first started in my last term, then for whatever reason, decided not to. But I'm glad to see we're back in it, and, yeah, it all helps.
Excellent. Anything else? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries four to zero. Next, uh, consider license agreement with Hasbargen Customs LLC for non-exclusive use of Icebox of the Nation trademark. Uh, this just got added to our agenda today. I don't know any background on it. Uh, Betty, do you have any information on us?
Yep, I can. Um, Mayor Council, um, Ms. Hasbargen approached me late, uh, midday Thursday, and in regards to, um, realizing that, you know, she mocked up a, a sweatshirt. She has a custom apparel and mugs and different things that she works on in us, in her business. And she, you know, I had, do have a photo of it attached on the sweatshirt that she had made a sample of. And as she was doing it, she realized, wait a minute, they have a trademark for the Icebox of the Nation. So she did reach out to us and ask that question. Um, I did find documentation. We have had in the past, um, a, a license agreement like this with, um, another vendor who done and has made sweatshirts like this in the past. It's, they've done it like two and three year, or, yeah, two and three year agreements. So we suggested a three-year, uh, term on an agreement like this. It's non-exclusive, so she's not the only person that can do this, but they do have to ask to use a trademark. We have the option to charge if we so choose. Um, and, you know, just setting a, a term limit and, you know, what that looks like. Um, so you see, I did work with, um, Attorney Nelson over the weekend in the past, this morning, and she provided a, a license agreement in which Ms. Hasbargen had read through and it, you know, has no issues or problems with. Um, if we were to go ahead and move forward and authorize her, you know, a non-exclusive right to use Icebox of the Nation trademark in, in some of her apparel and other items that she does.
I, I see on the, uh, there's no date on the termination. Is it just, are, are you asking from us for how long of a term it's going to be?
Yes, exactly. And in the past, you know, the one previous that I did find was like a three-year term. So if that's something you guys would like to do, we can definitely incorporate that into this, whichever you, whatever you feel is most appropriate.
Okay. Um, so at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion for a three-year, uh, license agreement with Hasbargen Customs LLC?
Let's move.
We have a motion by...
If we all get a free sweatshirt.
That isn't how it works.
Oh, you beat me to it.
Nooo.
You beat me to it.
You can't second that. That's, that's against the law.
I just seconded it.
I make a motion, we give her a...
She's got out something.
Throw us in jail?
No, but you can't wear the shirt in public then.
Oh, okay.
So we have a motion for a three-year agreement without getting a free sweatshirt?
Yep.
And you're seconding that?
Yep.
All right. You guys are trying to get us all in jail. Or actually, not in jail, wearing cool shirts.
We have to be in different jails, because we have a quorum.
Yeah.
That's funny.
They got, they got special sections, eh, that they could work.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just think that's like pre-advertising for us.
That's how I see it too.
Yeah.
I do too. Um, it, it's funny that you say pre-advertising, because I have something to bring up in the EDA meeting. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any, uh, any additional discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four to zero.
I'll seriously vote it out, though I gotta go out there tomorrow to do the financials at Kida. If I pulled her aside, maybe, then, you know?
No!
Oh, okay. All right.
Gee.
That was off the record, by the way.
Oh, it's not. It's...
All right. So we have, uh...
Say what I was pulling her aside for.
We have a, now we'll go to the reports of the Administrator, Attorney, Department Head, City Administrator.
Uh, this, I have nothing additional this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Uh, City Attorney?
I have nothing additional. Thank you.
Uh, Chief?
Nothing.
All right. Uh, we'll go to, uh, in your packets, you have the Police Monthly Report and the Fire EMS, uh, Rescue Monthly Reports, Reports to the Mayor, Council Committees, Boards and Commissions.
I'd like to say something about the Police Department. Um, they provided a real service for the fish fry, and that's keeping the roads safe there. At the high school, when we do the fish fry, and they showed up early and, just like they've done in the past, and done a great job. So thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
And we're handing out fish.
Right. Yeah. So that's a good deal. Makes everybody feel comfortable, so.
Anything else? I, uh, I just want to make a formal thank you for, to the Police Department, uh, for the Fourth of July, Fire EMS, um, the, everybody in that depart, those, those two departments not only put stuff in the parade, they, they had people that were helping all over the place. Then you go to Public Works, which for the first time since I've been around, contacted and asked if they could put some stuff in the parade, which I thought was fantastic. So, and Public Works and the summer, summer crews did so much, uh, behind the scenes to be able to put on a four-day event from helping, uh, make sure that the, there was power to the stage at the amphitheater, making sure that we had, uh, porta potties, latrines, washing sta, stations, power at all three sites that we had events this Fourth of July. I want to personally thank all of the folks that started in January with me on the, um, Fourth of July Commission. Uh, specifically Becky Roder and, um, Amy Mortensen, Tony Corpey, and, uh, Becky Roder and, um, one more person, Rob Pastor. Uh, those, those folks were there almost every week. And if they weren't there every week, they were in the email chains trying to get everything going. Uh, Emma Rudd came in, and she helped us with all of our flyers. And the Fourth of July was a lot this year. And we really need, uh, additional funding going into next year, and we also need, um, more volunteers. So in the next couple of months, I'm going to do everything in my power to get more volunteers to be active into that board. Um, there's a lot of meetings, and then really, we, everyone has like one day where they do something. So it's, uh, it, it was really good. Our Fourth of July celebration went off without a hitch this year. And I, I really want to thank, um, I can't think of, the Dirty Vandals for coming up and Bill Pekarsky for playing music, the Dirty Dozen for playing music. I mean, everything that happened this year was absolutely fantastic. Um, and if I missed anybody, it isn't because your, your, um, help wasn't appreciated. It's just, there were so many people that did above and beyond this year that it's hard to come up with all the names on a fly. So anyways, the Fourth of July was a huge success because of the community, because of all those that put in their time. And to be honest, all the people that showed up. You can't have a great celebration if nobody shows up. So we, we appreciate all of those people, and I just want to say thank you. Uh, heartfelt thank you.
I agree. No, I agree. And one thing I liked about the city employees are there, I agree with everything you said about them. They all, and I mentioned this on the radio, that they didn't look like they were drugged there either.
Yeah.
You know, they had smiles on their face, and they're going about their business. And, yeah, so no, it was good for everybody. Like I said, the rain didn't seem to bother anybody, you know? So, yeah, it was a good turnout. Mike got in the way at the hamburger booth a little bit, but we worked around that.
I had to. Think about things there for a little while. Yeah.
Oh, I, I... Well, I, I, we did have a wrap-up meeting this last Wednesday for the Fourth of July. And there, there are some things that we think that we could do better next year. One of the weird conversations is the Fourth of July is on a Thursday next year. And how do you put a celebration around a Thursday? We had a couple of quick conversations about what we might be looking at and maybe changing how we do stuff. So if that's the case, no, it's, it's gonna be okay. Change is okay.
It's not, that's not how we do it around here. Just get you ready.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's my report. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything to bring forward? Please.
Crystal plans? Is it correct that we now have a planning program in the process? Does anyone that gets a blight ticket now must sign up for ongoing garbage service?
That is not accurate. That, so the question was, do we have something in place right now that if you get a blight ticket, you have to have garbage service? That is what we're leaning, or that's what the route we're going towards. We have not put that into place. That is, that'll definitely be coming up at a committee of the whole once we can have a good conversation about that, see if that's the route we go. And then before it comes to the council, we will have a town hall meeting so we can bring people in and explain across the board what our goals and, and objectives are to that ordinance. Any other audience? Hearing none, we'll go to correspondence. The International Falls Library meeting information is from July 12th, 2023. Our next council meeting will be on August 7th, 2023 at 5:30. This meeting is adjourned.